Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 22nd Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance. Councilman Jones, allegiance and the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move on to the roll call members. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Roberts.
There.
Councilman Copeland.
Absent.
Councilman Wheat.
Here.
Councilman Fleming.
Absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any changes or edits to the minutes?
No, sir.
Okay, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes that are second.
Second.
Motion is second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. I know we have quite a bit of work to do tonight, but I wanted to bring up Steve Koenberger from the Waterford Institute. This isn't on your agenda, but we had a meeting on Friday, and we wanted to give him a chance to kind of speak to the council about an upcoming event that would benefit the community. So I just wanted to give Steve a chance to introduce what he's doing, and absolutely, yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, counsel. My name is Steve Koenberger with the Waterford Research Institute. Bring that up here. There we are. The Waterford Research Institute is a non-for-profit focused in on early literacy, math, and science. We've been working in the state of Indiana for about, since 2003 with school.
Hey, Steve, can you speak into the microphone? They really, really got to hear you. Yep, there you go.
A little bit closer.
Better. There you go.
All right, thank you. Our primary focus is really helping kids get off to a great start in their education, and it's been our passion and our mission since, really, since the '70s. And this kind of slide kind of talks about it here. And why we're here today is because of, in 2017, with the On My Way Pre-K bill, there was a small set aside for a pilot program, which is the in-home kindergarten readiness programming. And so I'm going to take a few minutes to go through how we came to how I'm here today. So we've been around, as I mentioned, we're a non-for-profit based out of Salt Lake City. And in 2007, the Utah Department of Education came to the Waterford Institute, and they had a challenge. And their challenge was kids, kids in rural communities were coming to school ill-prepared to be successful. They did not have the pre-literacy, pre-math, and science skills to be successful in kindergarten. If you think about Utah, 85% of it is rural. And when I talk about rural, one of the counties that we actually served is the site of Rhode Island, and they had 18 kids. So obviously, providing a center for a pre-K is not possible. It'd be illegal to put kids on the bus and so forth. So we partnered with the Utah Department of Education to provide the Waterford Early Reading and Math and Science Program at home to children that didn't have access to high-quality pre-K. So in 2007, a couple of interesting facts about Utah is they have the lowest per-pupil funding in the nation. They are a large population of residents that don't want to attend a traditional brick-and-mortar pre-K center. And then again, we already talked about, this is why they have five national parks or four national parks, is they're very rural. When we talk about serving students, much like the On My Way Pre-K, we're really talking about kids that are the neediest. And when we went to serve students in Utah in 2007, we really targeted those kids. Some challenges that kids come from low-income families is, one, there's the word gap. Are you guys familiar with the word gap? Okay. Hart and Risley did a study, and they monitored families, and families with high income, middle-class income compared to low-income families. In kids coming to school, there was a 30 million word gap between high-income and low-income families. Think about that gap as kids are getting prepared for kindergarten. Secondly, there's also a quality of language spoken gap. And so families, with professional families, there is a positive to negative, a six positive words spoken to one negative word. In middle-class families, it's two to one. But in families in economic distress, it's actually flipped, which is, think about that as we're preparing for school. There's a unique opportunity when we think about pre-K, first and second grade, and we've all heard about the pre-K studies, and like never before, we're allocating funding, but arguably, the results haven't changed much. And so a study done by Maryland Jaeger Adams, an expert in early literacy, stated that students on average with a positive trajectory have about 3,000 hours of pre-literacy skills. Those that are in economic distress have about 250 hours of pre-literacy skills. Think about the inequity there. There's a unique opportunity, and if we don't catch them up early, that actually quadruples, and students will have to learn at four times the rate to catch up to their peers. Let me kind of fast-forward here, maybe. Come on now. No. Sorry, I'm going to page up. Okay, there we are. We're back in motion. There's that unique opportunity between the age of four up through eight, that we have this opportunity to catch up kids. And that's really what we're focused on. It's not very often that research and economics come together. James Hackman, who's a University of Chicago economist, really focuses in on early literacy, and he states that there's a 13 to one return on investments. For every $13, for every $1 spent, there's a $13 return. I'd like that return as well for my 401K. But if we look closely, the further the kids go along into school, the lower of the return on the dollar. Again, the opportunity cost of funds. What do we know about kids that are not prepared by fourth grade? They repeat grades. They require extensive interventions. Furthermore, they're less likely to graduate high school. So what we do is really help kids build the foundation that they can be successful. This is not to take away from pre-K centers, but the reality is, there's just not enough funding for it. And this is where we became an opportunity. So what this incorporates is, we provide families with the technology, actually, a Chromebook. We provide them with Wi-Fi. We provide them with our sophomore, our software. And then finally, really, the magic behind it is really, is the personal care representative that works with families. It's not about just putting a device and technology in there. It's really about having them be accountable. And through the power of technology, we have the opportunity to hold families accountable. And so when we see a family is straying off task, we can actually intervene right away. We are a one-stop shop. They don't have to call Dell for the technology. They don't have to call Verizon for the Wi-Fi. It all comes to us, and we handle it. And that's really the critical piece and separates us. Families that have started with us, we have a 92% graduation rate. So families that start with us in the beginning of the school year, complete the program with us. And we think that's kind of astonishing. It's really because of the personal care representatives. How do you get from 2000 to where we are today? Well, you have to have great results. First, in 2007, like I mentioned, we only served a few hundred kids. Now, we're serving 15,000 students in the state of Utah through this program. It's actually one-third of all pre-K kiddos. You don't get there without great results. And over the years, kids that were coming through the program and going out of it and into kindergarten, walking into kindergarten, were coming in at a kindergarten advanced level. So that's two-thirds to three-quarters of the way through kindergarten. And in some aspects, in real words and nonsense words, we're performing at a first-grade level. That kind of goes back to the research and the economics, those things coming together. What did we know? Greater literacy skills, two to three times greater growth, and again, coming to school at a kindergarten advanced. That's really exciting. I mean, as you talk about the results. But let's talk about a longitudinal study. So they did a longitudinal study and tracked kids up through third, fourth grade. Well, sometimes you hear about the pre-K, there's a washout. Well, what they found is that there's no washout. These results are lasting up through fourth grade. The kids are outperforming their peers in subgroups. So they used a baseline assessment called DIBELS, and it's a standard assessment that most educators are very familiar with. And what we saw is up through first, second, and third grade, is the kids that had Waterford at home are outperforming their peers up through first, second, and third grade. The biggest gains are those kids that had the highest at-risk population. So we're talking about special education kids up through first, second, and third grade. Red is first grade, second grade, third grade. Minority students, first, second, and third grade. Low-income students, first, second, and third grade. ELL students, first, second, and third grade. And across the board, in all subgroups, the students that had Waterford early on were outperforming their peers. Waterford as part of the Upstart program. In 2013, 2014, we received a federal grant, an I-3 grant. And basically, an I-3 grant is a, it's a multimillion-dollar grant, a $12 million grant. And basically, it's proof of concept, now go out and take it to other states. In 2016, Senator Cruz from up by Fort Wayne, we became very interested in the program. And so we were able to pilot this program, the 2016-2017 school year down in New Albany-Floyd. The results came back again, very positive. Kids coming out of the program at a kindergarten advanced level. If you're familiar with New Albany-Floyd, New Albany-Floyd is a great district for diverse demographics. You have your high-income families on Floyd's knobs. You have your urban settings down in New Albany-Floyd. You have rural communities. And so it's a great district to pull from. And so it kind of validated what, what we'd shared, or what we were already receiving. So when we talk about Salt Lake City in Utah, people's like, yeah, but it's a little different. And we know it's a little bit different. So we were able, through the I-3 grant, go to Mississippi, South Carolina, Pennsylvania, Philadelphia, downtown Philadelphia, the Appalachian Mountains in Ohio, and the results came back again. So where are we going with this, Steve? So in 2016-17, Governor Holcomb signed a bill that allowed, that incorporated in-home kindergarten readiness programming. And what we're looking to do is partner with this community to provide the Upstart program, and possibly get your support for a November 7th parent introduction meeting. This program is free. It is absolutely free. There is no cost to the family. There is no cost to the community. What we need help with is identifying families and serving those families. And that's it. There's no fine print. That's it. Questions?
Let's do it.
Thank you, Mike. That's, that's kind of where, why I wanted to have Steve come. Again, we, we see this as a possible partnership with the city. You said you have about a spot for 150 kids left in this program statewide?
True. We are serving 350 kids across the state. And we're getting there. It just takes a little bit of time. And yeah, we, we have spots for about 150 left.
So the reason I wanted to have him come.
150 for the state?
Yes. So there's 150 across the state. Now, it's a great program, but it's year one, and it takes a little bit. It's kind of like the Too Good To Be True, like Senator Gentry, he kept waiting, or Senator, Mayor Gentry. He kept waiting for the fine print, and there is no fine print. And I think that's the, people keep waiting for the fine print, it's Too Good To Be True, but it's, it's what we're doing.
So have you talked to Bob Taylor?
I've had a little bit of conversation with Dr. Taylor. Yes.
Yeah, so the reason I wanted to bring Steve to the meeting is, you know, of course, you guys all have districts and may know families that, we're really trying to have this parent, or the kind of kickoff meeting supposed to be on November 7th. So that's really the, the goal. We wanted to kind of raise awareness for that in the community. And if you know any families that may, or if anybody watching at home knows any families, please, I think we're planning on having it here in the council chambers on November 7th.
Yep.
So that was really the goal, is just to make people aware of this upcoming opportunity for them, so.
There are probably two or three people in Lebanon that you'd tell, you could tell, and they fill this room with people that need the program.
Absolutely. And it's, it's.
Prince Holt Stokes, Mrs. Solomon.
Yep.
Lots of other folks.
And that's what we're hoping. You know, that letter I showed up on the screen was signed June 15th. So we're really, normally, we're 12 months in advance and have lined-up families. So we're kind of scrambling at this point to fulfill that allotment of 350 students. So we'll take them. Take them all.
We've got two representatives from Habitat for Humanity.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Steve?
Okay. The only thing that is, they are free status students. So about 32K, family of four. So free status.
Okay. Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, all.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, do I have a council's consent to move the agenda around a little bit, to do the food and beverage requests first? Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay, let people come in, get out.
I'll make a suggestion of that.
Okay. With consent, then, I'll move down to new business, and we'll have our food and beverage requests. First up is the Habitat for Humanity. I believe we have Liz with us. Liz, you want to talk about what the request is, please?
Yes, thank you for having me. I'm Liz with Habitat for Humanity, Executive Director. And I appreciate you listening to our request from, to the Food and Beverage Commission. I think probably many of you know that we build houses. Habitat for Humanity has built almost 60 homes throughout Boone County. But we wanted to do more, so we've started a repair program. And we had a kickoff day, September 29th, and we're doing exterior repairs on homeowner-occupied properties throughout Boone County. So our kickoff day, we did four projects here in Lebanon. And it was awesome. We teamed up with Makita Love, that issues the citations, and got a referral from her. And so it has to follow the Habitat model, which there's a need. So we'll see the visual need based on the exterior of the house and projects that need to be done. And then they have to pay us back on a sliding scale. So the payback on that day for those homeowners was anywhere from 30 to 60% of the actual cost of the, whatever they had done. There were some decks that were, there was a deck that was built, a couple stairs that were replaced, a couple sets of stairs, windows, some painting, lots of landscape, yard cleanup. It was a hugely successful day. So what we were basically looking for is just some support for that day. And Amy presented last week for it, so we just appreciate any help you can give us. I was told to keep it short and sweet, so.
How many, how many homes in Lebanon have you guys put together in the last few years?
You mean built?
Yeah.
In the last few years? Well, I, let's see. Four, probably like seven or eight in the last three years. Yeah.
So are you asking it all? I think that was a question by Stein.
Yeah, it was all together?
I didn't have an answer for you.
Well, because we built nine homes in the last three years, and one was in Whitestown, and one was in Thorntown. So the others have been here in Lebanon. So a lot of them down on South Meridian. We currently have our women build over on Southwest Street. So yeah, we've, you know, we're definitely, this is where our primary build is. This is where most of our applicants want to live. So.
What were your expenses for that day? You remember?
About $4,600.
Okay. So you're looking, you're looking for a little help for those.
Little help for that. That would be awesome. Whatever help, I mean, it all, it all helps. So it's a new project, where we had just a fantastic day. Literally felt like we could not recreate that day. It was so good. And had 100 volunteers working on all these projects, and it was, it was great. We actually partnered also with the Caring Center. They have a transitional home over on Main Street. I think it's Main Street. I'm losing the name of the street right now. But we're doing extra, and some more work for them, too. So that's a house where they have, Teresa Hanners runs that house. So we've been able to partner with other agencies, too, which is awesome. We're happy to do that. So we're excited. It's good.
The Food and Beverage Committee met with them and had a little bit of discussion. And we discussed some more after they left, and we all agreed to, that we'd like to make a recommendation to give them $1,000 to help support what they've done this year, and hope that goes forward to help them even more. So that's the motion.
Okay. We have a motion to issue a $1,000 grant from the Food and Beverage Fund to Habitat for Humanity. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Very generous.
Thank you very much, Liz. Thank you for all the work you guys do. It's always great.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
We'll have a letter. Who do I give this to?
Tanya.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to help us with this.
Thank you.
There are some volunteers.
Yeah, please share any information in the future, too. I'm sure we, we can have people that love to help out, so.
Okay.
All right. Next up is a food and beverage request from the United Way for the Veterans' Breakfast. Reagan for you?
Oh, it's the YMCA.
Oh, YMCA, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was told it was United Way.
Let me put my hand down to officially invite you to meet him.
Don't worry, we're not having competing Veterans' breakfasts, so we're good. Just the one.
Well, thank you for allowing me to be here. I did meet with the Food and Beverage Committee a couple of weeks ago to submit our request. My name is Reagan LaPage. I do serve on the Board of Directors for the With Them Family YMCA. And as you know, as most YMCA's are, we are a deficit YMCA, so we rely totally on contributions and sponsorships from community businesses and civilians. So part of my job as a board member is to seek out donations and money for the cause of the YMCA. One of the programs that is close to my heart is our Veterans' Day program, the breakfast that we do for our veterans. Both of my parents are veterans, so it's close to my heart. It's a great event. This is going to be our third year, and every year it's grown. And so I am asking again for $1,000, which was so generously granted last year, so I'd like to make that request again. The breakfast is November 9th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the With Them Family YMCA. We hold it in our gymnasium. In the past two years, we've cooked and served the meal ourselves, but this year, we do have a caterer. Cochran's Catering is going to be providing the food for us, so we're looking to offset the expense of that. Hashet will be donating books again. The Lebanon High School Pet Band will be there performing. And then our keynote speaker, last year, we had Joe Donnelly, and then we had the President and CEO of the YMCA, Eric Ellsworth, was there. This year, we have a local veteran from Lebanon, and his name is Richard Cavan II. He's a retired U.S. Navy Master Chief Petty Officer, so he'll be there giving our speech for the morning. So that is my request.
Okay. Dick?
Yes, we, the board discussed this, and we thought it was another good opportunity for the Food and Beverage Committee. We did sponsor it last year, and she has several other sponsors to help. So this year, we decided we'd just do 750 instead of 1,000. We can change that if you want, but that was our recommendation from the board. So I, you know, I'd make that the motion at this time.
We have a motion from the, you're the only member of the committee here tonight, too, so.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to support a $700 grant from the Food and Beverage Fund for the Veterans' Breakfast. Is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. There you go. Thank you, Reagan.
Thank you, guys, very much. I do appreciate it.
Okay, that concludes what I had, the food and beverage request. So we'll go back to new business with council's consent. Consent?
Sure.
Okay. All right. With that, we have ordinance 2018-15, our 2019 city budget. So I'll turn that over to Tanya to read on second reading.
Thank you. Okay. I read this all at the last meeting, so I will shorten the three or four paragraphs in the beginning and just get to the meat of the ordinance. But this is ordinance 2018-15, be it ordained and resolved by the Lebanon City Council that for the expenses of Lebanon Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2019. And here are the amounts. The general fund is $10,777,362. Casino River Boat is $93,551. Fire Pension $313,886. Police Pension $235,798. Local Road and Street $268,000. Motor Vehicle Highway $1,194,014. Park and Recreation $1,353,953. Park Bond $376,581. Qum Cap Improvement is $63,000. Qum Cap Development is $475,000. Stormwater Bond is $563,419. Sanitation is $660,000. We have two home-rolled funds. One is food and beverage for $500,000, and one is for public safety lit, local income tax, and that's $2,608,745. So the grand total is $19,483,309.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya.
So that is, the ordinance 2018-15 has been read on second reading. We'll open this up for public comment as well, too. I will say, we're very proud, through the workshops, we were able to keep, we plan to keep the tax rate exactly the same, frozen as what it's been since 2016. So appreciate all the council's hard work on that, while also making significant investments in our community as well, too. So any public comment concerning the 2019 budget, please step forward.
Okay. No. Any discussion among council concerning the ordinance 2018-15?
Not for me.
Other than just to point out and reiterate what you said, it's, it's a pretty good budget. We have a very low tax rate. It may even be too low for what we're trying to do, but that's a discussion for another time. But I think this body has done a pretty good job of keeping things under control in an era where maybe some places aren't doing that. And I'd just like to commend everybody that I think it's a pretty good budget.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Any?
I have, I have to say, I actually lost my train of thought in the middle of that. I thought it was interesting, we needed to point out that we had Umball Engineer, or Umball.
Financial.
Financial, and they let us know that it takes $12 million of new assessed valuation to add $100,000 to our budget approximately. So you see all the growth around Lebanon. We ought to think, we've got tax dollars, you know, that, we're just flowing like crazy. That's not true. Because our tax rate is, is so low and competitive, it's amazing how much growth we need to see before we can really raise those budgets. So in case folks are thinking, well, look at all the growth around town. We ought to, you know, our budget ought to be able to increase and do all kinds of things. We can't do that, so.
I will also say, too, Umball was, said we're in excellent financial shape as well, too. We have very healthy reserves. So we, we've been doing a great job maintaining that over time as well, too. So I think they were actually trying to tell us that we needed to spend more money on some things, so. But that's all right.
I would like to, I would like to congratulate the department heads who really do a good job of keeping their budgets in check, because that allows us to look good up here. So it's really the department heads doing the heavy lifting.
Well said. And one in the back, all right. Any other comment from either council or public? Okay. With that, would consider a motion concerning ordinance 2018-15.
I move that we approve ordinance 2018-15, the city budget.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Ordinance 2018-15, passionately. Thank you, council. And now we'll move on to ordinance 2018-16, which is, I'm sure the employees are very interested in, salaries of certain employees.
Right. This is ordinance 2018-16, an ordinance fixing the salaries of certain employees of the city of Lebanon, Indiana, beginning January 1st, 2019. Let me see what I can skip. Following statement of salaries is the base pay for the positions listed. Full-time employees of the city of Lebanon receive longevity pay at a rate of $75 per year of service. Longevity pay begins after the first full year of service and does not include the current year of service when calculating the amount for each employee. If that employee transfers to a vacated position, the amount of the salary would be no more than that amount listed in said ordinance plus the longevity of the employee transferring to the vacancy. So beginning January 1, 2019, the department totals are as follows. Motor Vehicle Department is $409,855. Parks Department is $589,751. The above rates apply to a 40-hour work week. However, when extreme emergencies arise requiring the above-name employees to work for more than 40 hours per week as intended, they shall be compensated according to the Federal Labor Standards Act and the city's overtime policy. This section does not apply to department heads. Planning Department $344,029. The Historic Commission $6,000. Police Department $2228,500. Fire Department $1,525,500. Clerk Treasurers Office $116,000. Clerk-Treasurers Office, $116,321. The Mayor's Office, $37,153. Community Development, $64,156. Engineering Department, $74,263. The annual salaries of the following board members shall be, the Board of Works is $3,600. That's for two members. The other two are paid from Stormwater. The annual salaries, I'm sorry, City Plan Commission is $9,600. Board of Zoning Appeals is $6,000. Park Board is $3,600. Plan Commission, zoning, and Park Board members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings they attend. This ordinance shall take effect January 1st, 2019.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Now that the ordinance has been read, any initial comments from council?
No, sir.
Any public comments concerning the ordinance? Okay. Seeing none? Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, would entertain a motion concerning Ordinance 2018-16.
I'll make a motion. We approve Ordinance 2018-16, the salaries for certain employees.
We have motion to approve 2018-16. All those in favor, or is there a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
All right.
Ordinance passed unanimously. Thank you, council. And now, on to Ordinance 2018-17, which is salaries of elected officials.
Okay. This is the last one. Ordinance 2018-17, fixing the salaries of elected officials of the city of Lebanon beginning January 1st, 2019. The maximum salaries of the following elected officials of the city of Lebanon beginning January 1st, 2019 are as follows. Mayor, $51,766. Clerk-Treasurer, $55,298. Common Counsel, $37,853. That's for all seven members. In addition to the funds paid by the civil city as set out in Section 2 above, the following elected and appointed official, officers are to be paid from funds from the municipal utility are as follows. The Mayor, $26,866. Clerk-Treasurer, $15,360. And Deputy Clerk-Treasurer, $26,995. This ordinance shall take effect January 1st, 2019.
Okay. Thank you, Tanya. Any public comment concerning Ordinance 2018-17? Any council discussion concerning Ordinance 2018-17?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, would entertain a motion?
I make a motion. We pass Ordinance 2018-17.
We have a motion to adopt Ordinance 2018-17. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Ordinance 2018-17 passed unanimously. Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
All right. That concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from the council for old business? Okay. Then, we'll move on to new business. First item I have here, this is a little out of order, this has been delayed a little bit, but is Ordinance 2018-13, which is the Elmwood Neighborhood Voluntary Annexation. I'll have Ben Bontrager introduce that for us.
Good evening, council members. I think we've talked about this a couple of times. Just one quick update, that last home that I had indicated last time, we did not have signed a petition. We do have a petition annexation signed by that homeowner now, so we do have the entirety of Elmwood with a voluntary petition for annexation. So, we did get over that hurdle. She was on vacation, but we drove down to Speedway today to get her to sign it, so we did get that. So, just a quick recap, this is, you know, the Elmwood subdivision. They approached us about being annexed to the city of Lebanon. The major discussion that we've had at this point is about maintenance of road and bridge, and I know that was discussed at the last time, so if there's any additional questions about that, we'll be happy to try to answer any of those. Otherwise, you know, this is, this is the first, we're ready for the first reading in the public hearing tonight.
Ben, they had a homeowner association, didn't they?
Yes.
Did they? Okay. Did they have any funds available to help upgrade the street, or?
They just recently repaved. They just recently repaved the street. I don't remember how long ago it was, but it was just in the last couple of years, I believe. So, I don't know what funds they have now, but they did just repave the street just recently.
Ben, what is the status of the bridge as far as who's responsible for what?
I know that question came of last time, and I know there was, to Mr. Shine's office. So, right now, it is a private street. Upon annexation, we intend to dedicate right-of-way, so it would become public right-of-way, both the street and the bridge. Depending on the interpretation on the bridge, I don't know, Chris has got some updates on that.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Ben. So, we're going to be finalizing our take, legal stance on who's responsible overall for the bridge. We'll have that to the council and to everybody for review prior to second reading, for sure.
You leaning a certain way on it yet?
Initial analysis indicates it would be the county. Since there is the cumulative fund set up, it would be as it looks right now. The county's responsibility, but we're just running all the traps, making sure that all the analysis is complete before final sign-off by Rob.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll just comment that I was up at County Bridge Conference last week up at Purdue, and spoke with several colleagues about the issue and explained everything about it, and there, it was funny, because I had several that basically, they all agreed that even though it is a private street, or a private subdivision, it's still a public street. The public uses it. And so, really, being it was a public street, it was a bridge that was over, you know, handled public traffic.
So, and they think that even now, before we even accept the right-of-way?
Yeah. And so, their, even their agreement was that, that was county's to really maintain. So, I, you know, it'll be something we'll have to go through.
Well, and we do have a report that says it'll fail in zero to five years. So, at some point, the information is on our side, and it's worth, it's worth the negotiation discussion with the county about it, so.
Yeah, I, yeah. At this point, I see no reason for us to put any funds towards the bridge at this time. We may have to.
You want to take the hardball stance, don't you?
Have a little discussion, letter to letter back from attorney to attorney, but, you know, I think, I think that's all I'll say.
Okay. Thank you, Dick. Any further comment?
No, sir.
Okay. So, this time, then, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-13. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, just want to tell us hello, feel free to step forward.
Mayor, I'd like to make just a.
Sure.
Couple more comments for the council. This happens quite often across the state of Indiana, in counties, municipalities, and it sometimes ends up that the county, or the municipality will take it in, or the county has a private neighborhood and they want to be annexed. Nine times out of 10, the county does not accept it, and the reason they don't accept it is because it's not to, the road was built not to county standards. We probably have that same option, but it's a pretty private little neighborhood that not too many people are going back there unless you're a friend of the guest, or you're outside seating on a Sunday afternoon, want to drive through the neighborhood to look at people, but other than that, sometimes they're taken in by cities, by just-as-is, and, but most of the time, they're not, because they wanted to bring them up to whatever standard was. Kind of hard to do that with this one, because you got a road and a bridge involved, and so forth.
Well, and to clarify, too, Ben, we are having them dedicate right-of-way to us as well.
Yes, right.
Currently?
Yes.
And also, giving us enough right-of-way if we wanted to, we could expand, we could widen the road if we chose to, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we, and all the homeowners agreed to that, and we're fine?
Yes.
And we're already furnishing water and sewer and.
Yeah, we're, all the utilities are provided by the state right now.
Utilities, everything, we're already doing that.
Yes.
Now, they'll get city trash and.
Correct. Yeah, they don't get city trash, correct?
They'll get city trash and city police, and so forth, so.
And frankly, right, I mean, if there was an emergency in Elmwood, I mean, we are the, we are going to be responding, right? We're the most, we're the closest jurisdiction, you know, early Board of Works, we had our contract we had with the homeowner association to pick up their leaves, right? So, it kind of streamlines a couple of different things for us, too, that just makes it official. I mean, they kind of have function as city residents, but they have, by just technicality, have not been, so I think it's in our best long-term interest to move forward with it. Public hearing is still open, so if anyone else wants to step forward. Okay, Ben, at this time, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance 2018-13. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. Any further comments? Oh, actually, I'll have, I'll have Chris read the ordinance now.
Thank you, mayor and council. So, again, this is an ordinance with respect to annexing certain territory to the city of Lebanon. So, the city of Lebanon, common council, has the authority and desires to annex lands into the municipality. 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for this annexation, as identified in Exhibit A and B to this ordinance, have filed voluntary position with the council. The city of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing on July 16th, 2018. That commission forwarded docket 18-28 to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the single-family residential SF2 zoning classification for the annexation area. The council has conducted a public hearing on September 10th, 2018. Council has adopted a fiscal plan for the annexation of the annexation area. The annexation area meets the contiguity requirements, contiguity, excuse me, requirements of the Indiana Code. The council now finds that the statutory criteria for annexation has been met. So, if ordained by the council, this ordinance would do a few things. Number one, the area would be annexed. The area would be assigned to Council District Number 4. The annexation area would be assigned the single-family residential SF2 zoning reclassification, and the ordinance would be in full force and effect upon its passage by the council, its publication, and upon the passage of the applicable 30-day waiting period, all as provided by the laws of the state of Indiana.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Who's District 4, again?
Mine.
Your, Dick?
Yeah. Oh, a question?
Yeah.
Two weeks, we move forward, and we accept this annexation. That'll probably do away with that agreement we just made with Elmwood for trash pickup, wouldn't it?
Um.
I mean, they'll be in the city, then.
I believe there's a waiting period, though?
Yes, there would be a waiting period.
30-day waiting period? Yeah, so that's, there was 30-day waiting period, so that's why we still did the agreement. So, we're gonna, we're gonna milk it a little bit, one more season on the leaves from them, so. Yeah, because they would take us probably by the end of the leaf season by then, so. Any further questions, discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Ordinance 2018-13, that now has been read on first reading. We will take that up at our next meeting on November 13th. We'll also have the fiscal plan resolution at that time as well. Okay. Next item up is Ordinance 2018-18, which is the Boone County Animal Control Ordinance. I'll have Chris read this one first, and then, we'll have discussion about it.
Thank you, mayor and council. Again, this is, ordinance is going to ratify the Boone County Animal Control Ordinance. On June 4th, 2018, the Boone County Board of Commissioners adopted Ordinance 2018-2. That ordinance was entitled in ordinance repealing and replacing Boone County Code sections relating to animal control. The provisions of the county ordinance apply within the municipal limits of the city of Lebanon, and less or until the city adopts an ordinance prohibiting the enforcement of that county ordinance. The City Council for the city of Lebanon should, if desired, state its agreement with the county ordinance concerning animal control. Although not required to do so, the city of Lebanon, if a were to pass ordinance, would desire to ratify the county ordinance and state that it will be in full force and effect within the municipal boundaries of Lebanon. Now, therefore, if it was ordained by this council, Boone County Ordinance 2018-02, which is attached, I won't read any length that's a bit lengthy, but it's attached here to as Exhibit 1, and all the terms contained therein would be ratified as being in full force and effect within the boundaries of the city of Lebanon.
Thank you, Chris. So, I'd kind of give you a little bit of history. This was an ordinance that was discussed at length by the county commissioners. Again, when they adopted it, it does currently apply to us. We did receive a letter from the Sheriff's Department asking us if we were planning on adopting the ordinance, or at least something that ratified it. Apparently, the animal control made roughly 700 calls related to animal control within the city limits in 2018. So, this is something that is being addressed currently. We did pay our $10,000 towards the animal control. We paid that invoice from them, so we are currently participating with them. At this time, this is, this ordinance strictly just ratifies what was currently in the Boone County ordinance. However, this was similar to what Whitestown did. However, if we chose to, we could do a deeper dive on this and rework this. I'm open to that. Again, this was just, this was the kind of most straightforward path on it. However, if we feel that there needs to be more discussion, and maybe make it more shaped towards us, we're open to hear that feedback from council as well, too. So, just wanted to bring that up.
Well, that's my first concern, is there's a lot of stuff here that I think we need to consider if that's the right fit for Lebanon, and the bottom line is, it's already in force anyway. So, I don't understand why we have to pass this. I suppose we have to pass ratifying the laws of theft and robbery and all that, too, if we follow that same thing. So, my position is, I think we need to table it and think about it a little bit, and that essentially doesn't change anything, so.
The, I would say, one thing that would change if we did adopt it, is it would allow our officers to write. I don't know if we do already, Tyson? I mean, maybe you could help us with how we enforce this currently?
The main case that we deal with are barking dogs, loose dogs. We've always decided them on our local ordinances, as is now. We've not used the county ordinances. Any other type of things that the ordinance covers, such as livestock, we've turned over to the planning commission, such as chickens, but currently, we still decide for barking or loose dogs.
But as far as neglect and cruelty, there's state laws that address that, right?
That is correct.
Because, again, I go back to my.
Anything like that, we would take a case report and turn it over to the Boone County Prosecutor's Office, such as cruelty to a vertebrate animal.
I kind of go back to, in 26 years as a police officer, I never thought, boy, I need, I need more laws to enforce this. We either made the case, you know, the laws were in place, so. That's, that's my skepticism, and let me also highlight that there's nobody up here that supports animal cruelty or neglect. I just want to make sure that we're not just adding regulatory burden without actually solving problems on the ground.
Well, and that's why I think with this version of it, where it's just a ordinance to ratify, it's not, since it already is in effect, right, we're just saying, we're just acknowledging that it is in effect. It's not a, we're not rewriting our current local ordinances, we're not writing our code. They still have, this ordinance would apply to us. It's just us saying, we recognize that the county passes ordinance.
And I understand it. My counterargument would be, then, why do we do anything? We can just let it stand, so.
Again, the request came from the sheriff to say.
I understand.
We want you to ratify it.
I understand.
So, does this, does this overwrite our local ordinances for being a, being the county would be taking over the municipalities? This would probably overwrite what we have, wouldn't it?
Well, this is already in effect.
Do I?
This is already in effect.
That sounded like a legal question to me, Dick, so. Chris?
I would want to look into that more fully, but it sounds like this is not on the books right now within the city, right? I mean, it's.
The way it was drafted is that it says it's in a full force and effect in municipalities.
Right. I would want to get back to you on that before the next reading.
Another good reason to table it.
Again, just wanted to, it's on first reading, right? We don't have to action tonight on it. It's been read now, so we can have continued discussion about it, if we want to figure out what the best path forward is on it. Again, this request came from the sheriff's office, just wanted to pass it along to council.
Sure. And again, I want to highlight, if we can make the world a better place, I'm all for that. I just want to make sure we're not throwing paper at something that doesn't really mean anything. anything.
Okay. Any comments from this side, guys?
No, sir.
You good? Any public comment concerning this? Okay, ordinance 2018-18 has been read on first reading. We'll continue to discuss or table at our next meeting. All right, next up is resolution 2018-38, which is a rainy day transfer.
This is a resolution transferring funds from the city general fund to the rainy day fund. The council has previously established a rainy day fund pursuant to IC Code 36185-1, and states the council may transfer unused and unencumbered funds into a rainy day fund by resolution, whereas the council desires to transfer $500,000 from city general to rainy day fund, and whereas the amount to be transferred, as delineated above, is less than 10% of the city's annual budget and is not being transferred to fund debt service. Be it resolved and adopted by the city council for Lebanon, Indiana, the amount to be transferred, which is $500,000, from Fund 101, City General, to Fund 270, Rainy Day. The Lebanon Clerk Treasurer is authorized to transfer said funds and take such actions necessary to comply with this resolution.
Remind with the balances on what we're doing, the current general fund balance?
We, I don't have the balance right here in front of me. The, three years ago, we transferred about $873,000. And with the help of UMBAL, we take a look at this, like I said, it can't be more than 10% of our city's annual budget. We looked at it last year. Keith Campbell, Councilman Campbell, is always looking to see if we can replenish that rainy day fund, because once we use that money, it's gone. There is no, there's no incoming funds unless we're doing what we're doing right now. So, that's where, and why we do this.
Okay. Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning resolution 2018-38? Okay, with that, would entertain a motion concerning resolution 2018-38.
I will move. We pass resolution 2018-38.
We have a motion to adopt resolution 2018-38. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that resolution passing unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from council for new business?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll move on to the claims, and entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any announcements, further discussion from council?
Wait, wait. Somebody's waving at her.
Oh, please, yes.
Yeah, Tracy has one, two of them.
Mayor, council, thank you very much. I have a couple of things that I wanted to share with you this evening. Lebanon Utilities is really pleased to announce that we've created a disaster recovery program. This program involved an in-depth look into every utility to find out what we truly need to keep the operations going during an emergency situation. So, what types of emergencies would you ask? Any. We actually did an in-depth study on over 25 different scenarios, depending on which utility it was, to see what do we need to do to keep going. And we're pleased to announce that we narrowed these scenarios down to the most likely and the most critical type of scenarios. Finally, with all the information that we've put together, now this took a lot of time, a lot of effort with all of our departments. And so, what we did is, we finally gathered all the information to respond to any of these issues, and we located that information into a secure, online document location. What that means is, if we lose power, if we lose anything, a natural disaster, if we can get to the internet, if we can get someplace out, if we can get to the internet, we can get to these documents. These documents actually show us what we need to do to restore, to repair, who we need to contact, who we need to, let's say that we have certain vendors that we work with, because we do. It has all their contact information, so that we can actually contact them very quickly and get the information, get things coming, so that we can be part of those first responders. Now, obviously, we're not first responding like, like our fire and police, but it's our job, it's essential services, and it's our job to make sure that we keep the lights on, we keep the water flowing, and we take care of the issues. This is just something I really wanted to let you know, that we've gone through this process, and that we're really excited about it. And so, the next piece that I wanted to say is, you know, talking about disaster recovery, last week, we had sent four line workers down to Tallahassee, Florida, after Hurricane Michael. Nick Elliott, Matt Myhill, Perry Shoemaker, and Kyle Larch drove down to Tallahassee as a part of the IMEA mutual aid program. And with other utilities in Indiana, they all gathered in the same location, they all worked together, and they restored power. And I think that's pretty neat, that we have people that are willing to do this, and we, as a city, are willing to send our people to help. I think the really interesting part for me is, it wouldn't have mattered what department it was. You know, yes, these were our linemen, but you take our water workers, you take our wastewater workers, it wouldn't matter. Any of them would go down and get the same reports coming back of what a great job they did, how courteous they are, how helpful they are, sometimes having to sleep in your truck because there's no power for the hotel, you can't, there's no place to stay. You know, those things happen when you're trying to do disaster recovery. They do their best with mutual aid to make sure they take care of our guys. They do feed them, they do give them, you know, food, water, and all that, but, boy, sometimes there's just not a place to sleep. You know, so on 16 hours, off eight. On 16 hours, off eight. And that's what these guys did. And I thought they should get this recognition to you, that that is the type of people that we have in our utility. Thank you.
Nice, nice job.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jerma Trace.
How many, how many linemen were down there from other places, like the total number? There were thousands, weren't there?
Thousands, like, I think it was 2,800?
Yeah.
You know, from, from, from multiple locations, yes. And that, and we're talking just in that area, you know, in the Panhandle area.
Yeah. That's pretty cool.
It's amazing.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements or discussion, council?
No, sir.
See, this is where I was going to stress, any public comment concerning our proceedings? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion adjourned. I make a motion, we adjourn. We have a motion adjourned. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those who are here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 13th, in honor of Veterans Day. So, Tuesday, November 13th, at 7:50 p.m. Thanks for watching.